From the general fund or whether we take it from the special use fund, it's going to be reimbursed upon completion of that financing package. Is that correct?
Yeah, because the assessment district went alone.
Yes and no.
Yeah, they won't own its debt.
I'm just trying to be clear on it. I don't know.
I hear what you're saying, but as a practice, I think we should avoid any kind of temporary tapping into the special, that special use fund.
We have a motion, a second, to take it from the general fund reserves.
I'm saying I'm fine with it.
Can I clarify, are you including in your motion to approve the purchase agreement?
Yeah.
Wrap that all together, or do you want to do this?
Purchase of the mitigation bank?
Yes.
I would hope so.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, all right, let me, let me clarify my motion. How's that? I would recommend that we approve the purchase agreement and appropriation of funds with the funds to be borrowed from the general fund until such time as we collect the funds back from the citizens in the assessment district.
Right.
Well, or the...
Or the funding mechanism for the project.
Yeah.
And I'll... That's my second.
Okay. So, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can you just speak to the history of the straw poll for a moment, Howard?
The history of the straw poll, that goes all the way back to, oh, my God. This project has been discussed for, what, twenty years?
Yep.
And, and whenever it got brought up in front of city council, the whole debate was who's going to pay? Who's going to pay? And until March of 2015, that was never answered. Well, in March of 2015, a group of residents from the benefited area, primarily the Bird section of Punta Gorda Isles.
The Buckley Association.
Yes.
May he rest in peace.
Hired Hans Wilson and Associates to do an engineering analysis, and included in that was the establishment of an assessment district for the benefited property owners to pay for this project. At the meeting at the Isles Yacht Club, there were over four hundred people. And it was overwhelmingly, not all residents of the Punta Gorda Isles Bird section, but most of them were. And we were there. We made presentations. We heard from the people who were there that, yes, we are willing to pay for this. We want to do it as an assessment district, not having the rest of the people in Punta Gorda pay for it, just those who are benefiting from it. City council then held a couple of, one, a special meeting, and then a city council meeting. They were at the event center. One of the meetings, we had over eight hundred and fifty people. And again, it was reiterated at those meetings, this is in 2015, that we move forward with an assessment district. And so, the project was moving forward, and it has consistently moved forward. Maybe it's taken longer than what some people wanted, but we went through it step by step to where we now have all the permits in place. And, I mean, we ought to be like, that's quite an accomplishment on this project.
It's huge.
So, let's keep it going and get it done.
It's huge. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can we take five?
Sure. Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Lynn.
It's eleven seventeen. We're going to take seven. So, we'll come back at eleven twenty-five. That's good. That was effective. Eleven twenty-five, we are back in session under budget. The next item is the appropriation of funds into Phase Two of the sewer master planning project through the agreement with Charlotte County.
Good morning, Marion Pace, procurement manager, for the record. Back in July of 2017, the city entered into an interlocal agreement with Charlotte County based on their Jones Edman contract for their sewer master plan. So, that, we entered into ILA for, in our local agreement for the first phase to do the study. Now, the staff would like to proceed into Phase Two for the financing and the funding plan. So, Charlotte County, they entered into another amendment three with Jones Edman to include our scope of work.
Questions or comments for Marion? It really is a pretty decent deal for us.
It makes sense. I mean, they are the ones doing it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let them take the win.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have award of the agreement for the purchase of the marine-grade ready-mix concrete.
Again, Marion Pace, procurement manager, for the record. This is for, to award a new agreement for marine-grade concrete for our seawall fabrication for the seawalls damaged by Irma. We have a current agreement that's, they extended until today with preferred materials. But since it was a federalized contract, they're very strict with not allowing renewals with price increases. So, the, the current agreement that expires today, we had the right to renew at the same prices, terms, and conditions. They opted not to renew because they wanted a ten percent increase over that price of one hundred and three ninety-nine at the time. So, we did go out for bid. We received three bids. One didn't need to be rejected. And preferred ready-mix is the lowest responsive responsible bidder for award. For, this is an estimated quantity of three thousand cubic yards.
And does that get us to the end of the panels or not?
Yes, they, that's what staff, canal maintenance staff is projecting is going to be required to complete the remainder of the Irma seawall panels.
Yes.
I'm confused. I thought this three hundred and forty-five thousand is to purchase the rest of the cement we need.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, but you're talking about the contract for the, for preferred.
Yeah, preferred materials is for this concrete, yes, ma'am, for the award of this.
Are we approving the contractor's contract?
No.
Or are we approving the cement purchase?
The cement purchase with preferred materials.
Okay.
They supply it.
And who, what is, who is the company that's man, that's making the panels?
Newbert Construction.
Okay. That's, that's where the confusion is. This cover sheet was very confusing to me when I read it.
Motions?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to award the agreement with the preferred materials. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Oh, Rick, what percentage are they finished with the panels, the panel production? What percentage are we at?
For the record, Rick Keeney, Director of Public Works, don't have the percentage, but I know they're very close. I know, we're probably within, we're probably within a thousand panels of being, being done, pretty close. We needed twenty-seven hundred. We cleared the yard out, and they've almost got the yard filled again, almost. So, they're getting pretty close. We're, we're figuring probably December timeframe, they'll be done with the panels, pouring the panels.
Thank you.
That's just the panels.
Yep, that's just the panels.
Right. And work has started in Burnstour Isles, so that's good.
Nice. Unfinished business. We have the FEMA coastal risk map study project update.
Yes. Good morning. Randall Cole, chief building official, just a little, bringing up to speed where we're at today. We entered into a, city Punta Gorda entered into interlocal with Charlotte County with a contract with Wyler Engineering to act as our consultants during the FEMA risk map remapping process of the city and the county. This was done in two thousand, late 2014. Today, with Jason Green from Wyler Engineering and Todd Help from IT, to give us a little update of where we're at in the process, just to keep you aware that we're still out there and it's still moving forward. I'll be out slowly. Jason?
Good morning, I think, Jason Green. I want to thank Councilwoman Matthews for taking that break so I could have that extra seven minutes to get my thoughts together after two hours. We are moving forward. There's been, I don't want to say delay, it's been a lag waiting for production, basically, from FEMA and the FEMA partners. Recently, we had a meeting and saw some, what they call working maps. They're not final. They haven't been approved by FEMA. We'll get some preliminary maps and, and some public outreach opportunities in the spring. They call it the spring. It's somewhere between February and July, if you call that spring. So, we're not sure of the exact deadline. On the screen, you can see this area right here. Preliminary map, release, planning, flood risk review meeting, and that's kind of where we're at, working map production, essentially. And then, we'll be moving into, in the spring, the, the open houses is what they'll host for the community. So, what we're going to start doing is taking those working maps and working with your staff and start identifying potential areas, not just Punta Gorda, but Charlotte County, areas that may be of concern, where we maybe think there are some overreach, potentially, because there is a general consensus that there are some increases in flood elevations throughout the county and throughout Punta Gorda. So, just kind of a quick summary for that background, what we're seeing statewide, well, at least in Southwest Florida, is your coastal zones, strangely enough, are kind of balancing and dropping a little bit. And your bayside and, you know, inter, intercoastal type zones are actually increasing, which puts us in the crosshairs for that. So, that's partially because of the way that they model. The modeling is more accurate, is what their claim is. So, we're keeping an eye on that. We've been doing so for several years, and all along, providing comment and feedback to the, the mapping partners, raising some objections, questioning some of the data. So, we're trying to set up a opportunity to make sure that you have a full voice at the end and don't get passed over.
So, when you say bayside, intercoastal, what?
Charlotte Harbor. So, in the past, the way they did the transects, something like Charlotte Harbor was difficult to model. Remember that the hurricane modeling basis that they use is from the seventies. So, they've recreated that. It's supposed to be more modern, supercomputers, all these other things. And in their comments, it's more accurate, and they can model things that they couldn't before. As a result of that, then there's, there's some, obviously, impacts potentially to that. So, in theory, yes, they're more accurate because they have more transects, they're looking at more coastline. But there's obviously always discussions on, you know, what that model, you know, bad stuff in, bad stuff out. So, we're keeping an eye on that. So, what will happen is through the public open house meetings is the, the community, they'll do an outreach and we'll ramp up and have some meetings here throughout the county, especially in Punta Gorda, and hopefully get the public input, and they'll be able to see more what the impact is to their properties and to our neighborhoods.
And what's the timeframe of those open house meetings?
Spring of 2019. There are no dates set for that. They have not produced the preliminary maps yet, so.
So, would you let the viewing public know the city of Punta Gorda does not dictate when FEMA has their open house meetings, please?
We do not dictate when they have their open house meetings, correct. We're hoping it's a partnership and a cooperative effort to, or make those arrangements and make sure that they're at times and places that are most accessible to the public.
That would be great.
Absolutely. And so, that's, that's the background that we're working on. I was constantly trying to make sure that they hear that.
Todd's behind you.
Just Todd Help, for the record, IT GIS analyst of the city. I was involved in this project with Wyler and the consultants, so I wanted to be here to help answer any questions you have or if you have any questions going forward, feel free to give me a call upstairs and be happy to, to talk to you about it. Project is, is behind schedule. Like, we mentioned FEMA is driving the, driving the cart, kind of pulling the cart. We've been reviewing throughout the last two years and have made a lot of substantial comments to FEMA. Whether those are all going to be incorporated or not, we don't know yet because we don't have preliminary maps yet. But when we get the preliminary maps in, hopefully, the spring, that'll really start the process, the formal review process and the appeal process and the public outreach and dissemination communications process.
Thank you.
And some of the things we'll look at is major projects, such as your seawall in Gilcrest, making sure that they incorporate things of that, such as that, to make sure that that's accurate. So, those things may have, certain things may have been constructed, road improvements, burnt store widening, things of that may have been done after they were doing data collection. So, right now, it's just really making sure that they've included major projects that potentially could change flood zones.
I mean, one, one area in particular that's been discussed is Ponce Park due to, you know, the rehab and the new construction of the Peace River Wildlife Center that would be there potentially. Do you see any value in us trying to pursue any kind of change there? Or how would we go about that if, if we decided to do that?
That's a challenging spot because of the open water, and then, and like I said, the way that the modeling is done now. You could look at it, get a kind of a preliminary analysis. I wouldn't be real confident that something would change. And also, what we're seeing is a lot of changes going on along the coast, and those changes not being incorporated already on the draft working maps. So, you may get it, and then it may take it away again in two and a half years, so. And that's the one thing I forgot to, I think, two, about two to two and a half years is the target by FEMA to wrap all this up and have before you, eventually, you'll have to adopt those, those maps as your own, whatever comes to that, barring any challenges or other incidences.
If I can add one more comment. There's, up until this point, this is important related to council, the city and the counties' goals and objectives have been consistent. It's all, it's, you know, basically, we're getting information, we're reviewing it. At this point, going forward, work maps and preliminary maps, our goals and objectives may not be exactly the same as the county's. So, there may be at some point, a time where, you know, staff may come and ask for some resources to actually focus on specific city issues. At this point, it's been an overall flood information study or FIS update. Now, you get into the work maps, the specifics of our neighborhoods, our area, Ponce Park, and so on. So, maybe, we may want to, you know, keep that in the back of your mind as we go forward.
Would that be after the, the work maps? No, the preliminary maps or what's the time, timeframe?
I'd say the spring, as we move into those preliminary maps and the, and the public meetings. We, but we can start working on that now. There's opportunity with the data that we have to start identifying, like I said, I think, areas of concern or question that maybe don't look right, that maybe we have other data that they missed. Those are things that we can work with the staff, your city staff, as we are also with the county staff, to identify those individual neighborhoods.
So, are the LoMars that we currently have in some private systems have too? Are those in the work, the work maps now, or are they being looked over again as well? Are they still continuing to have the revision?
Some are. I couldn't tell you a percentage of how many. We haven't looked at all of them, but I, there are a few that look like they have not been included.
Okay.
Randall Cole. As far as LoMars, they're outside the mapping process that we're going. This is Phase One. And this is what the contract was for, was for consulting during Phase One, to actually get some working maps prior to our adoption. Then, we, if we want, if the city wants to enter into further negotiations with FEMA or challenges, that'll be a separate item, a separate contract between the city and the consulting firm. And the county will do likewise. If they have issues they want to address, that's when we'll, we'll separate and identify our priorities. They may differ from the county's, obviously, because of different properties. So, this is just Phase One to get to the maps.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
All right, great question. Did I understand you to say that based on your preliminary observations, you think that the base flood elevations may be increasing when the new maps come out?
Yeah, I mean, just as a general statement across the state, yes, and Punta Gorda, yes. There's, there's some areas that are clearly increasing potentially.
Yeah. I went through this process with Sarasota and Manti Counties. And in those counties, primarily, the boundaries of the districts were modified to, and, and districts established where they hadn't been established previously. Northport was very heavily hit by that because at the time, the old maps were done, much of Northport hadn't been developed, and so, they weren't included in the zones and all that. And so, the actual flood, base flood elevations didn't change all that much when the new maps came out. Primarily, areas were included that hadn't previously been included and might have required flood insurance where they hadn't previously been included. But if the base flood elevations are going to increase in our maps, what that's going to do is create a lot of non-conforming structures, and that's going to change, that's going to impact our citizens to a large extent. So, it's something to keep an eye on.
Yeah, and if I could just add to that, last year in the Florida Building Code, a one-foot freeboard was incorporated in the Florida Building Code. So, we're already one foot above FEMA base flood because of the building code change. So, that, again, as Mr. Levin said, that created a lot of non-conforming properties.
That's anything being built from last year till now, right?
Yes.
So, that puts the, when you say one foot above freeboard?
Base flood. Whatever the base flood elevation is, new construction is one foot above that now under the Florida Building Code.
As opposed to, was it three inches before?
Yes, we had a local ordinance of three inches. We're now at the Florida Building Code, which is twelve inches above base flood.
And so, that would, future maps, if it's plus a foot, you would then add that foot on top of that. So, it's all, you know, if it goes up a foot, it goes up a foot across the board regardless of the freeboard.
Oh, I'm seeing some new construction, and the houses are considerably higher.
Yes. And some of that's use of space underneath, but yes, there, those, those people will probably be fine. But yeah, when you, I'm built at existing base flood in downtown, so I'm already behind one because of the freeboard. And if it goes up a foot, I'll be essentially behind two.
But I, I'm talking about like in the special residential overlay. Where we don't, it's not in the store district, and it's, homes being built on stem walls that are considerably higher.
Yes.
Did the city adopt the one-foot freeboard?
Yes, it's in our ordinance. We adopt the latest version of the Florida Building Code automatically when it comes into effect. And, and so, yes, we've been enforcing that since the 2017 code went into effect, July first, 2017.
He did a presentation.
He did.
I must have missed that one point.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you for that opportunity. We look forward to working with you further.
Thank you.
Keep us in FEMA's good graces for the moment. Next, we have a presentation by the Punta Gorda Boater, Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance for the Waterfront Development Master Plan 2018.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm John Welsh. I am the president of the Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance and a resident of Punta Gorda Isles. So, we appreciate the opportunity to do this. We are all avid boaters that belong to the organization. In fact, we represent about three to four thousand citizens in our community. So, we are located in the confluence of the Peace River and Charlotte Harbor. What a great place to live. And we are a unique community. The Punta Gorda Waterfront has and continues to play a decisive role in the development of our city. It's, we think, key to the future development of our city, and it is our greatest resource. That's why people move here. Punta Gorda Isles, Burnstour Isles are premier boating communities. They have accounted for the bulk of our city population, increased residential tax revenue, and quite frankly, it benefits all citizens, whether they're in the boating communities or not, and as well as the commercial sectors of our community. We have been recognized for years as a great place to boat and live. Money Magazine, nineteen ninety-six, two thousand and three, Yachting Magazine in 2011, the Miami Herald in 2014. And this year, we were recognized as one of the eight Gulf Coast beauties. So, we're widely recognized as a great sailing and boating community. Why a master plan? Well, the Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance approached the city about developing a waterfront master plan because as we looked at the past master plans, many of which had been developed, and in fact, the Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance was formed after Charlie and put together a master plan in 2005. So, the last one that was done, I believe, was in 2011. We felt it was time to take a look at it again. On March eighth, city council approved us to move forward, and our focus was to develop a plan which promotes Punta Gorda as a destination for a variety of water-oriented activities. So, this is our mission statement, to develop and submit a master plan to the city of Punta Gorda with regard to, but not limited to, the development of and management of the waterfront. This plan will seek to establish Punta Gorda as the premier recreational boating community in the continental United States. The implementation of this plan will ensure our citizens experience a superior boating environment, and visiting boaters will enjoy enhanced amenities while taking advantage of our boater-friendly community and businesses. Here are our member organizations. Lots of folks belong to the Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance. Each one of these organizations has a representative and an alternate that can attend our meetings and vote on items that we're considering. Not only do we have members, we have a number of advisory organizations, as you can see, the Peace River Power Squadron, Coast Guard Auxiliary, the city of Punta Gorda. So, we, we have wide representation throughout the community. So, our objective, establish Punta Gorda as a preferred destination for visiting boaters, support recreational boating in our community. So, one of the things that's already underway, and this plan looks to the future. It's not about necessarily what we're currently doing, but how do we continue to make Punta Gorda the best waterfront community in the country? Right now, we're working on Ponce Park, and we think we need to continue forward with that. Relocation of the Peace River Wildlife Center, redesign of parking, kayak launches, and I'll talk about kayak launching later because that's become a big hobby in our community. Fisherman's Village Marina. If you've been by Fisherman's Village this summer, you may have noticed there weren't many empty slips. We have come to a point in our community where we have a real dockage problem. There's an increase in shortage of slips and dockage. We recommend the city work with Fisherman's Village Marina to expand the number of slips at the marina. Obviously, this would be at the expense of Fisherman's Village, not the city, but it's something I think we should encourage. The Punta Gorda Waterfront Hotel and Marina, the old Best Western, as I understand it, before my time. Again, we have a lack of slip availability. Again, we recommend the city work with the owners to reestablish the marina. And if you've not been here in, before Charlie, all those sticks sticking up out of the water used to be a marina. So, if we could reestablish that, it would provide additional slips, dinghy docks, restrooms, showers for visiting boaters, and be an inviting environment for visiting boaters. The Four Points Hotel and Marina, again, lack of slips. There used to be a marina behind where the Four Points is. Recommend the same thing, that we recommend that the city work with the owners to see if they would reestablish that marina, provide additional slips, dinghy docks, restrooms, showers, and again, be an inviting environment for visiting boaters. Amenities for visiting boaters. Right now, if you're anchored off Gilcrest and you have refuse or trash to discard, where does it go? It goes in the boat club trash bin, or it goes in the Y trash bin, which they then have to pay the haul off. So, if we're really going to be an environment that invites visiting boaters, we need to establish trash receptacles, potable water access. It would be great to have Wi-Fi system throughout the Gilcrest Park and waterfront area, showers for visiting boaters at Fisherman's Village and Punta Gorda Hotel, if those reestablish and expand, and a visitor information center, at least a kiosk where people could go and find out about what's going on in Punta Gorda and be able to spend their money in Punta Gorda. The West Mooring Field. The West Mooring Field off of Gilcrest Park is really needed because of the dockage issue, the anchorage issue. It promotes boating tourism. It provides the city with a mechanism to manage and control anchorage off of Gilcrest Park. Right now, it is against the law for the city of Punta Gorda to pass ordinances to have anything to do with managing anchoring off of our shore. If you have a mooring ball field, you have the ability as a city to pass regulation and ordinances to manage derelict boats, how long boats can stay and where they can anchor. So, not only does it provide additional dockage, it provides the city with a mechanism to control and manage things like derelict boats. Dinghy and day docks. A day dock is different than a dinghy dock in that it provides access to larger boats to come and say, want to go out to lunch with friends? So, I put them in my boat in the Isles, and we drive up to Fisherman's Village, find out there's no day dock, no place to park my boat. So, we need more day docks so people can stop and visit, spend their money at restaurants, and get back on and leave. Dinghy docks are for smaller boats that come with larger boats so people can get ashore. So, we need to work with a county to look about constructing day docks and dinghy docks behind the event center. It would be a perfect location for people to come in and go to the restaurants and shops in downtown. Dinghy docks at the Four Points and Punta Gorda Hotel. And we also need to put a break wall around the docks that we currently have in Gilcrest behind the Boat Club building because in storms, they really get beat up. We need kayak launch sites. I know that we've talked about putting one in Ponce Park. It would be great to have something east of Highway forty-one in Colony Point. Kayaking has become a big hobby and a big sport in this area, so we need to accommodate those people that have that hobby. The Boat Club and Bayfront Waterfront Buildings. City should act on one of three's three options. One, renovation of both buildings. This would be cheaper than building a new building. If we extended the lease, as the Boat Club has said, they would most likely invest in the renovation of that building, which would not cost the city. New facades on the exterior of the buildings. New facades on the exterior of the buildings, update the interior, new restrooms, other improvements would greatly improve their usability and improve their curb appeal. Remove the old buildings is the second option, replace them with a new structure. If you have the money, great. If not, we feel that the first option with a commitment to a five- or 10-year goal of funding a new building would be the way to go. Third option, do nothing. We do not feel this is an acceptable solution since the buildings will continue to deteriorate and become an eyesore. Ordinances. City recently established clear ordinance for boaters utilizing dinghy docks in the Boat Club and Lashley Marina. We need to continue to do that, especially if we establish the mooring ball field that gives us the option to really have some ability to manage who anchors off of Gilcrest Park. Alternate access, we talked about that today. Absolutely, we think that needs to go forward. Dredging. Review and apply for permits for Ponce Inlet to dredge deeper. And although we say we dredge to six feet, and this is all confusing to me, but apparently there are different standards and different, it's really five and a half feet is what Ponce Inlet is dredged to. I run aground almost every time I go out Ponce Inlet. Boats are getting bigger and deeper, and we need to accommodate that. It will make our properties more valuable, and we need to work with the county to dredge Alligator Creek deeper. Since Irma went through, everything shifted after they dredged it, and the solution is moving the buoys rather than redredging. Water taxi service, as we look at Sunseeker across the harbor, we need to be proactive and defending against the impact that that could have on our community. So, we think establishing a water taxi service, working with them, reduce automobile traffic and promote tourism in our community. Boating events. We do have boating events in this community, and it's been surprising to us that we have not taken advantage of these. So, the city and chamber should work with local clubs to organize things like sail-ins, trawler fest, expand existing events like a Conquistador Cup, the Leukemia Cup held annually on the Peace River. Marketing. Establish and enhance ongoing campaigns, city branding aimed at boaters and tourists interested in water-based activities in partnership with the city of Punta Gorda, Charlotte County, Chamber of Commerce, and Charlotte County Tourism Bureau. Continued focus on infrastructure and environment. Continue to manage and maintain harbor facilities by continuing and developing programs for repair, reconstruction, and maintenance of harbor walks, seawalls, beaches, dinghy docks, boat access areas, piers, and fishing wharves. Provide consistent and attractive signage, and continue working with environmental groups to establish oyster beds, living shorelines, and so forth. The waterfront is our most valuable resource. Proactive measures must be taken by the city, county, state, and federal governments. Proactive measures must be taken to manage and develop this resource, benefit our citizens, attract visiting boaters and tourists to our community, and benefit our commercial sector. We need additional input. This is from the boating community. But it would be great to have additional input from homeowners association, our commercial sector, and other people throughout the community. I will say that as we look at this, we also looked at the survey done by Team Punta Gorda about the Boat Club and the waterfront, and we took this into consideration. We think this addresses many of the things that came up through that survey. Any questions?
Questions?
No, I was able to have a one-on-one meeting with John prior to this. So, I was able to have a good discussion about this and like the ideas. I know that we, Howard, we had, what year was it when we were going to have, go through the permitting process for a west mooring field? And that was, we turned those dollars into a dredging project by the, for Gilchrist Landing, I believe it was.
The discussion of the west mooring field was a number of years ago.
It was a long time ago.
And it was going to be, that was going to be a significant process.
Right.
We never ironed out who was going to manage the mooring field. At one point, it was going to be the Punta Gorda Waterfront Hotel, but that kind of went by the wayside, although they may still be interested in the future. Fisherman's Village has an interest in the future possibly to manage it. We couldn't iron that out. So, you don't want to put up a mooring field with no management structure.
Right.
So, it was kind of put on the wayside, and we concentrated on Gilchrist Landing.
Was there, I've heard that there was a bathymetric study done that would push the mooring field way out into the harbor? Is that something that was presented?
Yeah, I remember bathymetric studies.
Would all have to be repeated?
Yeah.
I have seen, I have seen something where it would go, and it puts the mooring field out closer to the channel. It's not right in close to the, to, closer in toward land because of the preserve.
Where the people are now, like?
Yeah, it puts it out further than where people would imagine it being, I think.
But we would have to start that whole process again.
Right, and I know we had MAC support for that, and it was going to cost, the permitting was somewhere around $200,000.
It was, yeah.
It was expensive.
It was expensive.
Yes.
Two things. One thing with, I think with things off of Gilchrist Park, probably order-wise, the mooring field would have to come first because we've already seen some negative impacts about just increasing, you know, the kind of random people being there. And so, I think one, I would say mooring field, then breakwater, then X, Y, and Z, in order, I think that order would have to be there. Also, regarding the slips, I've actually been in some contact with the Army Corps, and they basically said that if your projects are half an acre or less at a time, that it's actually a fast-track permitting process as opposed to having to go through the whole drama. But one thing we do have to realize in our harbor is the seagrass. Because I was looking, I was asking about temporary docks, and they were saying that any place seagrass was an issue. So, we have to also work with the other office down the hall and make sure that wherever we're looking at doing things that we, you know, we are preserved. So, how are we going to go about that? But I would say just the mooring field, I would say would need to be a priority. For us, if we're really going to think about really doing this and making us a more premier boating community, it would have to be in a controlled fashion, most likely run by a commercial entity so it can be controlled.
Yeah, I agree. I think the mooring field is probably needed. Money, I mean, we can certainly apply for grants from various organizations to fund it. But, I mean, I think the first decision is, is this something that we really want to go after and get organized around it? And the Boaters Alliance stands ready to work with the city in any way that we can. We certainly want to be involved in the implementation because that's the true difference between a plan and success, is let's make sure that we put the elements in place to implement and get these things done in the next two to five years. Because it'll probably take two years, as everybody knows, when you deal with the federal government to get funding, or not to get funding, but get permitting, it takes a long time.
So, I guess, you know, we're back chicken and the egg. If we've identified the management company, then that would be the first step, I would assume.
And I've had initial talks, and Patty Allen here today?
Nope.
No.
She sits right there.
Patty has said that she would be interested in managing the mooring ball field. I mean, that's not a commitment, but there was interest there.
Another question I had when you brought up the Alligator Creek dredging, who decides that? Who's in charge of that?
Alligator Creek Waterway, it's a county MSBU.
So, was there a board?
Yes, there's a board, and I, all the residents on the water in Burnstour Isles pay into it. Twenty-five, right now, the fee's $25 a year. Anyone who has access to Alligator Creek Waterway pays into that for the dredging.
Can you submit to be on the board, or?
Yes, you can submit to be on the board if you're a resident and pay into it. And there are some Burnstour Isles people that are on the board, and.
So, then that's where to go for that item, right, through?
Yes, it is, and I don't know where it stands right now. I know that Irma did cause some shoaling and did move things around, so.
And the MAC paid for a lot of the dredging expense, I believe, when it was dredged.
I don't know about that. They had quite a reserve.
Okay.
And they, and because there was, there were discussions by people who were kind of naysayers, the dredging is never going to occur because they dredged to a mean low tide of six feet for Alligator Creek, and they said that's never going to happen. But they had a huge reserve saved up to do that, so I don't know where that stands at this point in time.
I know the MAC is, the MAC is paying for relocating the markers in the channel on Alligator Creek.
Even though that's not the preferred scenario?
Even though it's not the preferred?
Yeah, I thought, I thought you were saying that wasn't the preferred, preferred.
Well, I think it was the quick fix. It was a request that boats were running aground, props were being damaged, so what are we going to do? And apparently, the shift was such that there was a deep channel, but it wasn't where the markers were. And so, they moved the markers out, but they didn't really go back in and redredge.
And it will impact our Alligator, the Buckley's Pass project because wherever the channel is less than, I think the channel is only 25 feet wide.
Yeah, it's not real wide.
Some parts, so it's, the plans are to widen it, but that's going to impact wherever that dredging occurs.
I just pulled up the Alligator Creek Waterway unit, and they're accepting applications for the two expiring positions. So, let your members know that they should be applying to get on that board so that they can affect that change that you'd like to see.
Absolutely. So, I guess what we would like, if you would accept our proposal for a master plan and forward it to the people doing the city master plan, would be something we would consider a positive move because we feel these are critical items to our community and certainly need to be considered when we put a full master plan together for the city.
Before I could support that, I'd like for the homeowners associations to do your, do your meetings with them and bring back any, you know, input from those groups that you're taking it to. Then I would feel more comfortable with that, for sure.
I feel the same, just to be able to impact, be able to comment on.
Councilmember Matthews, you're our representative to this group.
We don't have a, we don't have a designated, you're a volunteer representative.
Yeah, I serve as the liaison to the Boaters Alliance, and I go to all their meetings. And I've sat with John for over a year putting this plan together with a committee, and we feel that this is, this encompasses all the different aspects of the boating community that we felt needed to be addressed and where we still are lacking things we need going forward. So, there, and there are members of all the different homeowners associations on the Boaters Alliance, and they've been kept up to speed on all of this as it's progressed. I mean, we could go back to PGICA and Burnstour Isles Association and speak with them.
Well, I think the one association would be the Historic District Homeowners Association.
Big time.
Certainly, we want to hear from.
Because it's the most impacted.
Yeah.
I think philosophically, we're all in agreement on where we want to go. I think we're just saying that there's a couple little more steps made in that, because this certainly is a wonderful document that needs to be integrated into what the, whatever develops in the citywide master plan.
I would certainly be willing to accept it on a temporary basis, just as a document that we would include among the collection of things that would be examined. But with, with the content or the provision that you're going to be meeting with the homeowner association groups, just to check in.
I mean, I would say we would need to, I mean, if we're really going to make it a valid conversation with homeowners association, we would want to talk with them first before submitting the document.
I'm just saying because it is something that has been shared with us. So, it's information that if, if, I don't know how, what your timeframe would be, but if we were to pick somebody and they're going to be, you know, really getting on it right away, this is something that they certainly could look at as a, as a document.
Gary?
I think we're getting, unfortunately, because I like, I agree with you, I'd like to get on this right away. However, we're going to meet this afternoon to sort out who we want to help us with, with our city master plan. This needs to be integrated in the city master plan. We're not even at that step yet. So, I'm just saying, as, as great as this document is, we're, I think it's a little premature for us to accept it until we have the same transparency that we're requiring ourselves in the citywide master plan. This needs to be a part of it, absolutely. But I think we do need the other inputs before we would formally accept this document before we went further because I think we've got a lot of stuff going in the pot, and we want to make sure it gets integrated properly.
Well, I will make a commitment to get in touch with the Historic District Homeowners Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and any other suggestions you might want to send to me of people that I need to talk with and sit down and get input from them. You know, I really, I'd support that 100%.
To me, that's the next step.
I mean, if I could wave a magic lawn, the first thing we'd be doing is we'd have a management company already sorted out. We'd be putting a mooring field off Gilchrist Park yesterday. But unfortunately, I don't think we can move that quickly because of who we are and what, and the hoops we have to jump into. But I see that as probably, from my perspective, the largest, highest priority that I'd like to see is to deal with.
Anything else? Yes?
Since it's part of this effort, John's going to lead the way when we submit to you the grant application to MAC for Buckley's Pass.
Great.
He's our liaison. So, we will be producing that application package a couple months when the process starts, and we will be including an amount in there that we think is reasonable. And that's our first priority when it comes to the MAC, along with a, whatever the grants we have. But that is a big priority.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay. Could we, could we specify or speak to in that application that we could use some of those funds to the point that Nancy was making about the connection to the Alligator Creek? Or we don't want to be that specific?
I would, we've talked, we want to focus on Buckley's Pass.
Okay. Well, I mean, where the connection of Buckley's Pass goes to Alligator Creek, there's going to be some funds needed there to improve.
Well, it's part of the overall, it's part of the overall Buckley's Pass project costs.
About that.
Yeah.
The amount of money that is likely to be available is at most a half a million dollars. And that is probably all of the WICND funds which this would be eligible for. I think that's probably about what's going to be available this year. So, we'll be competing with other people, but they can reduce the amount that they provide, or they could fund the whole thing.
Whatever we get reduces the assessment.
Yep.
And I think that was our commitment.
It was.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the Gilchrist Park Waterfront Activity Center draft request proposal.
Good afternoon. For the record, Jean-Lebau Urban Design Development, Urban Design Manager. As you recall, back in, I believe it was 2015, we were looking at sales tax projects, and one of the projects that was recommended was the Gilchrist Park Waterfront Activity Center, and $75,000 was earmarked for that. Before you today is the, is a request for a proposal that deals with that area. This, the appropriation, or the earmarking of that money was also prior to the citywide master plan discussion. So, staff is looking for, for direction to decide if maybe we want to include this in the master plan as part of a contract negotiation down the line, once we have a firm picked, or if we want to independently move this forward as a separate project.
I mean, I'm fine with it being in the master plan, but the scope of this is very detailed. It's not the overall general, you know, if we could do both, I would be okay with that. But I mean, this says to qualified consultant will be experienced in architecture, landscape architecture, activity center design. I mean, that, that's a little bit more detailed, but maybe we could give it to the master plan firm, and then from there, move on to a more detailed.
It could be as a result of the outcome, we can tweak, bring it back as a section of the implementation plan of.
of the implementation plan of the citywide master plan.
One, I guess, important point about the timing of this is that because we're going to face to a Gilchrist Park, insights that can come from that could prevent needing to have to go back and do changes later. That's part of it, is that this, the way this is written, the results would have to be out, like basically by February as opposed to being out in the summertime. And so I think there is some benefit to the fact that, like, the last time, like Phase One, one of the issues was that we decided on the changes based on what people said, that we expressed what they wanted, but they weren't necessarily the best practices way. Like, we actually left a lot of the community out in thinking of that discussion. As a part of it with this, we don't want to, I guess, make those same mistakes that we, part, part of this is if we'd have someone who's actually a landscape architect, to specifically in this, this is really the best use of this part of the park, and it's a very specific thing. And I would dare say that that then would, that result would then be given to the master plan people to integrate into the bigger plan. But I do think it's worth looking at this part of the park as its own thing, because we really haven't looked at that. Just, just, I think it's a very specific skill set.
That I agree with. Yes?
I think that we are over, we've, we're already seeing some overlap with this request and the citizens' master plan scope, and I would hesitate to move forward on this and spend a separate $75,000 that we don't have to spend.
It's in the 1%, and it was, it was voted on, and the committee agreed on it as well. So that's where the funds are coming from, just to clarify.
I understand that. I totally understand that. That's, but the point being, we're, we're trying to find funds to fund all these different projects in the city, including the 1% sales tax program. We're looking for funds to do the Veterans Park renovations, and we're, we're trying to find money to do that. We, we decided that we have $100,000 that didn't get spent on the, the pier on the other side of the Justice Center, that we're going to hopefully be able to relocate those funds to the Veterans Park, and we have potentially another $75,000 here if we don't spend that separate of the citizens' master plan project. So I, I think it should be folded into the citizen's master plan and be part and parcel of that negotiation.
The only thing I would say to that is that they don't have this, the multidisciplinary team that, we haven't asked them for these people to do what this is designed to do. Can you please just speak to the 1% and that we really can't fund other projects, shouldn't, that were not in the program?
Now, the 1% sales tax that the voters voted on back in 2014 identified specific program areas, specific projects. This was one of them at that time. So if we go ahead and do another project, it has to relate to something in that program.
Veterans Park was?
Well, Veterans Park is part of the, what we would consider the harbor walk area, so we can relate that in there. We, the 1% project list specifically mentioned this.
The committee voted on it.
So, well, and the voters.
And then the voters voted on it.
The voters voted on it. So we have to decide, do we do this as a separate project to come up with a conceptual plan based on the Team Punagorda research, or if we use the master plan group, can they provide that specific service for that specific area?
See, one, one thing is that ultimately, our master plan process is pretty much to make sure that our land use regulations are, you know, basically meet our identity and our financial feasibility. That's entirely different skill set than landscape architect. And I would just dare say that, that putting, I mean, part of it, we're thinking, rethinking the park, especially talking with homeowners association, there's a lot of, I mean, people would like to see a more family-friendly aspect of the park and really emphasizing that. And I just say this, this is its own project. That's why it was voted on and funded for its own specific reason.
I have a question for Howard. So at some point in time, this county's already decided they're going to go forward and seek a sales tax project in, the voters will vote on that in 2020?
November 2020.
Okay. So at what point in time do you anticipate that we, as a community, will start to solicit input for projects?
We will be, we will be doing that in concert with Charlotte County when they form their group. So they're going to start discussing that next calendar year, although really realistically, we need to have our commitment early part of 2020.
Our commitment, meaning?
Project list.
Project list.
In 2020.
Okay. So.
The idea here was if we do, if we have somebody to give us a conceptual plan of how that particular area would look, and whether or not we keep the boat club and the bayfront, do we tear them both down? What do we do?
That's what we really need to know, because we just heard from the, from the waterfront master plan that that's what we need to know.
Yes, and we have the, we have this new building code. Part of this, again, it's a very specific thing, which we're not hiring people with this expertise. This is, this area is a very specific area, which if we do do buildings, we're not going to be able to come back as they are now. There's not going to be allowed. So that's just where we are.
I think that would be an important thing to figure out, if those buildings are worth rehabbing or not, because we know where the boat club is located is going to be very precarious to build on that spot. Gary?
Okay. I just, just to clarify for all of us in the city, we're not talking about funding this from the general fund, or are we talking about?
No, 1%.
This is coming from the 1%.
It was dedicated, 1%.
So this is not, this is not a part, my point being is, this is not part of the funding that we do when we get concerned about some other areas of the reserve and so forth. But rather, this would be an item that is funded to a significant part by the tourist attractions that are involved in Punagorda from outside money that comes in to our community, and it would also be a continuing of that type of attraction in the future. It does need to be incorporated into our master plan. However, there's another aspect of this, to me, that kind of reminds me of the, what I've become aware, has been a 20-year discussion, but at Buckley's Pass. This is something we know we need. We don't know whether we need to refurbish the buildings we have, or do we need to start square. We've got some community organizations, as we've heard from today, that are nervous because we don't know what we're really going to be doing. It seems to me is, is that it is time for us to, this would be a good time for us to go forward and find out what our options really are, so that we can work with our community organizations, our community, et cetera, in a way so that kind of put people at ease and also get excited about what's going forward, particularly with what's going on at Fisherman's Village, what's going on in the park, what's going on downtown, and what we hope to go downtown. It's all going to be integrated, and I think this is a time that we probably should go forward to look at this seriously.
And now that you've said that, I mean, to get those answers for the master plan firm, I think is vital.
That's the only way, because we can have a charrette about a beautiful building, but if it's not buildable on that site, then it's just pointless waste of our residents' time. We need to, this is a very specific skill set.
Nancy?
You know, I'm kind of listening to what's been said, listening to what, you know, Lynn said, and, and then listening to this, you know, Jaha, and I'm thinking, these are 70, this is $75,000. Is this something that we could use these funds, this $75,000 to help pay for, if we were to ask the firm that we are going to be deciding on this afternoon to incorporate this work into what they're doing, so that then we could use these funds to help cover that particular portion of the project?
As long as they deal with that project.
It would be an hour, and it would be $75,000 on to what they're doing, because
They have to deal with that project.
I think, you know, I'm hearing what you're saying, Jaha.
Yeah.
And, and I, I, you know, part of me is saying this is more granular.
Yes, very granular.
It's granular, it's much more granular than what I think the citywide master, I envisioned the citywide master plan being. So it's, it's kind of like asking them to shine a laser beam on that, that area on this, at the same, and related to that, though, is that has an impact. So there's, there's a ripple, there could be a ripple effect of whatever happens and what decisions are made. Well, then where do other groups go? And what's the impact on the rest of the community and that kind of thing? So if it's a part of us, of an overall master planning effort, then that master planning firm can look at those ripple effects and, and make additional recommendations.
But that's the point. That's, that's why it would be done, let's say, by February, and it would be something they can use. Because, see, right, I've, I've already had informal conversations with engineering firms about that area. It, it's, it's, it's not, we can't do what exists there again. So the very fact that we're going to, I mean, it requires a different skill set.
There is no way that through our procurement process, we can have a report done in February.
Oh.
It's impossible. I know our process, and.
Work at the speed of government.
You know, yeah, I mean, the private sector, yeah. But we have to put it out on the street, we have to get the quotes back, a staff committee has to evaluate who we get back, we have to then rank them, bring them to city council, you have to approve them, you know the process.
Yes. I would, I would be in favor of adding this scope of work into, weaving that into our citizens' master plan process, and using those funds to shine a laser beam at this issue, because I, I think there can, there will be ripple effects throughout the, the rest of the community, so that, so we do get that holistic view that we're, that we're really trying to see.
I agree.
But we haven't pointed out that we wanted them to do that through this whole process, so they may take it on, but we may get a half, unless we know that they have these, these skill sets. Project calls for a multidisciplinary, disciplinary team with proven.